I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the housing authority. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would please stand for a moment of silence for the deceased Long Beach firefighter, David Rosa, who was shot in the line of duty, which is so terrible. Please be seated. And I just wanted to remind everybody that today is July 3rd, and 242 years ago, thank you, Ole, minus a day, Independence Day of the United States, also referred to as the Fourth of July, which is a federal holiday commemorating the adoption by 56 members of the Continental Congress who adopted the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 1776. And because of that, we're all able to be here today, so we're very appreciative. Okay, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Albers.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Poe Tim Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. There are no presentations? Do we have any announcements or written communications?
I just have that one written communication, Mayor, that you presented to me, so you were going to read it for me.
Yes, I'd like to read this. It's dated July 21st, 2018, from the Catalina Island Humane Society. We have recently learned that several colony cats in Falls Canyon have become extremely ill and have died due to poisoning. Dr. Denny identified the causes as some type of toxin but couldn't confirm exactly what it is. Multiple samples of blood and tissue were sent to a laboratory for a toxicology analysis. Antifreeze was identified as the source. This is a dreadful and agonizing way for an animal to die. It is also completely preventable. There are two obvious ways an animal could ingest antifreeze. One would be if someone accidentally left a pan or container of it open so that an animal might be exposed to it. The second way is the unthinkable choice that someone purposely put it on food or in a pan with the intent of killing an animal. This is not only inhumane and cruel, but also against the law. The cats in Falls Canyon are part of a colony. That means that there is a caregiver who takes responsibility for the cats, provides them with food and water, has them spayed and neutered, and brings them to Dr. Denny if they are ill or injured. Because these cats are carefully monitored, it was not difficult to determine that something was very wrong. Other animals, especially the fox and deer, may well have been exposed to the antifreeze as well. There are dogs that run loose in Falls Canyon, but to my knowledge, no owner has reported their pet becoming ill. We would like to think that this is an isolated accidental incident, but we cannot be naive and blind to the fact that this could be a conscious malicious and illegal act. A report will be filed with the Sheriff's Department, and anyone found in violation will be prosecuted. Signed, Diane Stone, President, Catalina Island Humane Society. We will also be reading this at the next council meeting. This is really atrocious, and we thank Diane for bringing this to our attention. Okay, Department head reports.
Good afternoon. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, for the Pebble Beach Road Lift Station update. We're working on Phase Three, which is the permanent repairs now. We did a field review, completing that with our on-call engineering consultant and a land surveyor, and we collected data, field data, and established the scope of the repair. Bid doc should be ready by mid-August bidding. Construction would be required to start quickly, and due to the nature of the repairs, long lead material items would be procured by the city, and that would commence as soon as we have those material lists available to us during the design. The Villa Casino Arch, if you notice that we have done some painting on that, and that is strictly an interim effort. Significant restoration work needs to be completed in the fall, but we wanted to at least scrape off the paint that was peeling and put a fresh coat of paint. But if you notice, on the backside, a good portion of the plaster is gone. And Fourth of July, Public Works crews have been working in preparation for the Fourth. We'll be out there at 5:00 a.m. in the morning tomorrow, setting up for the parade, and then we'll be out there on the following day at 4:00 a.m., cleaning up with the final cleanup. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
I just, I'm sorry, I did have one comment. I went out to, and I wanted to congratulate Shanda Cassidy. She started her photo booth, which looks very cute out there. And there's a big electrical panel that is part of the pumps or something that are right near there.
Yes.
Could we talk to Claudia Campi maybe about putting a photo skin or something, you know, like take pictures of the trees around it, and then it would kind of blend in? Is there any reason?
Sounds like a good...
It wouldn't be that expensive, and it would really make it look better.
Yeah, a lot of communities have, you know, where they've put artwork on...
Yeah, but I thought it's an interim...
Trees, art, whatever, something to camouflage it. It's an opportunity.
Yeah, if you could look into that, that'd be great, Bob.
Okay, ask your will, and I'll report back.
Good afternoon. John Hawking, Avalon Sheriff's Station. And the first thing I want to say is, if I could get a copy of that letter or have it emailed to me.
Yes.
We would, we'll open investigation right away and find out what happened to those cats. So I really appreciate that. Everything's going well at the Sheriff's Station. We, obviously, Fourth of July, we have reserve deputies over for the next two days. They got here yesterday, be here tomorrow, and they'll be leaving on Thursday, so you'll see extra deputies out on patrol, and we're all ready for the parade and the Fourth of July festivities. Anybody have any questions for me?
There, I think we were going to have a discussion at one point about the Citizens Advisory Group that has the two members. I know there's been some question in the community that, number one, we'd like to see those continue, and number two, maybe expand the size of the group.
Yes, I talked to the committee members, and we are more than willing to expand the group. We like to have a variety of people from different neighborhoods, or at least different streets.
Yes.
And we will be continuing that, and we'll be having another meeting coming up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. And can I grab the copy?
Can I just give him the original? Or no?
I would just scan it and send it to him.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, I probably had it. Yeah, I just gave it out. Sorry. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City staff. The Fire Department has also leaned forward for the Fourth of July tomorrow, and we've up-staffed for emergency services, the parade, and the fireworks in the evening. And all that's been coordinated with the fireworks with Dan Hunky at Parks and Rec. That's all ready to go. This week, we've had a fair number of, been involved with some animal control calls. The Fire Department's always happy to assist, but Code Enforcement handles all the animal control issues, and so I just wanted to let everyone know that if you need to get ahold of animal control, their number is here at City Hall, 0220, extension 111. And after hours or in the evenings, if it's an emergency, the Sheriff's Dispatch can get ahold of animal control, and their number's 0174, and that's the Sheriff Business Line. Please don't call 911 for an animal control issue. Do you have any questions for me?
So Councilman Cassidy told me that as a new council member, I get to drive the truck tomorrow. I just wanted to...
Why not?
See if there's anything special I should know before he... No, just show up?
What's the worst that could happen?
Good one, Bill.
Absolutely. Council is certainly welcome. We'll let you do...
Oh, you're walking? Okay.
We'll let you do whatever the city attorney says is appropriate. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Council. And Pam, if you'd like, he doesn't want you to drive his truck, you can come out and drive our rescue boat.
There you go.
You know, we got a hose on that thing, too.
You haven't seen me try to pull a boat up to the dock, apparently.
Exactly, huh? Well, as you could guess, we're filling up rather quickly, a lot of boats coming over. We do have a predicted large south swell developing Thursday through Saturday. They've sent out the warnings, and it's, if, the warnings, they compared it to the one two years ago when we got hit with that terrible surge, so...
Hurricane Marine.
Exactly, exactly. So here we go again. We're, we have a plan in place, we're prepared the best we can with all the boats that we have in the harbor. I've contacted with Bob and all the maintenance personnel, and if we need to start lowering the ramps, like on the end of the Green Pier, onto the float, I've contacted Mark. We're just kind of standing by and watching. They did, compared to yesterday, compared to today, they downgraded it just a little bit. Instead of a seven-foot swell, it's down to about six foot, a little over six foot. So that's the good news. That means it's moving further east, and hopefully it'll have little impact on us. So again, it's one of those things that we just, we plan for and hope that we don't have to use it. The Yacht Club's going to have their dinghy dock parade around four o'clock on tomorrow, on the Fourth, and then we're working with the Fire Department and the barge with all the fireworks and stuff, so we've got a pretty busy, pretty busy week.
Yeah, great.
But that's about it. Any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day. Happy Fourth.
You too.
I don't really have anything new and exciting to report. Our four projects are all going smoothly, and Rosio and I actually did a site visit today in the absence of the building official to handle a minor complaint, went out there with our badges and our hats. So otherwise, it's all maintaining speed and course. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one for you, Amanda. I was actually going to email you, but I think you might be able to answer it pretty easy.
Okay.
A question came, was posed regarding grease traps for, say, Vons. Would the new Vons be required to have a grease trap?
I believe, based on the type of food preparation that they're going to be doing in their deli, they are putting in a grease interceptor.
And we're still requiring restaurants in town to have those, in general?
Yes.
Because I know a couple of years ago, there was a big push, and some people had to put them in.
Mm-hmm.
So we are still requiring those, right?
Yes, it is still required for, the Trailhead to be putting one in, Vons is putting one in. I, if Ning's didn't already have one, then they may be putting one in based on what the menu is when the island company takes over that restaurant operation. So it is still a requirement. If, it's my understanding, if the menu changes to a degree to where they need a grease interceptor, then they have to put one in.
Okay, so any time a business sells, they have to put one in?
That's what I...
But I know that Jordan is working with restaurants. So for instance, Sue Riglo took over Bloom, so technically they would have to, but they're trying to coordinate with Nigocita, which would make sense, too, for Pete's and the Ning's location to do, to combine, so that you're not digging up the streets and necessarily putting in multiple ones. And my recollection is the City Council just approved, I don't know, $50,000 contract for somebody to oversee that program.
Yes.
And report back.
He comes in, up to that, comes in, evaluates if there's been changes to the restaurants or ones that have been in compliance.
And how big the grease trap is going to, is going to have to be, and so forth.
Right. He's with Abbott and Sense.
Oh, I just real quick. So, oh, good, Amanda, so I ran into Matt or Mac, the project manager on the site?
At Vons.
Yes.
Yes.
Matt, whatever.
Matt.
There was, this is a minor thing, but there was a doggy bag dispenser on the thing, and when they put up all the scaffolding and the, whatever, it was removed?
Oh, at the corner where Wilcox used to be.
Right.
Okay.
And so I asked him if he happened to know where that was, and if so, if he could put it back on there. So I don't know if it ended up in a heap or what, but...
We can put one back up, you know, and always, I think bags are free here at City Hall, so...
Right. With all the visitors, it's time of year now, too, especially.
Right.
It might be nice to have one back.
If you go past my house on Middle Terrace, I don't own a dog, but I have a little birdhouse outside on my fence that has doggy bags in it.
Oh.
So that people who go around, visitors, and it's right next to the trash cans, so...
No, I stick some in the alley on people's little pipes that are back there, too, so when they walk down.
I'm sorry, Amanda, what's the Vons completion date looking like now?
They didn't want to give us a hard and fast date, but they said you should be able to buy either your Thanksgiving or your Christmas turkey this year.
Okay, great.
At the new Vons.
Thank you.
I'm here speaking on behalf of Finance. Bob apologizes that he wasn't able to make it. He needed to catch an earlier boat to spend the holiday with his family. As you guys are aware, we're continuing to work on the budget, but one item that was discussed last week that I just wanted to provide a quick update on relates to host compliance. We spoke with the vendor that we had hired to do some TOT compliance work. They provided us with their analysis, but considering the data that they used for that analysis, and data I mean business license information, CUP information, TOT data, was from 2017, we decided that before we could proceed any next steps, to get them updated data, they said once we provide them with the updated data, their analysis, it shouldn't take much additional time for them to rerun their analysis with the new business license CUP data, et cetera.
And I'm sorry, you listed conditional use permits from planning on that list.
Yes, so we're working with Amanda to get that data, the updated data over there as well.
And just based on the first analysis that they did, how many properties did they identify?
Again, potentially, as many as 120, but again, I want to caveat that number because I'm not entirely certain the data that was provided to them was the most up-to-date. So again, I want to caveat that number.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon. I walked in, I had visions of maybe like a beach ball volleyball game going on across the dais, but no?
Not yet. It was earlier.
Not yet. It was earlier, I missed it. And I'm sorry I missed it. I wanted to check the USC band. They're out playing on Wrigley's stage as we speak at 3:00. There's 300, 400 people down there watching them, so July 4th events are up and running. Just quickly, activities tomorrow, we've got bands starting at 11, excuse me, 12:00. Catalina Cruise Control is playing before and after the parade, which starts at 1:00 on Wrigley's stage. Channel Island Surf and Blues Club Land are playing from 4:30 to about 5:30, and this was a new one for me, Love Snout. Do we know Love Snout on the island? Some of the locals, Band Love Snout, playing from 6:00 to 7:00, a rock band, and then a Wrigley's stage again before and after the fireworks, the Something Band for some classic rock. And that'll be an 8:00 set and then a 9:20 set to 10:00. Lineup for cart judging is from 10:00 to 11:30 on Lower Descanso. For those that are riding the fire truck noon at the fire station, and we'll have the Grand Marshal meet there, Sheila Kuehl and her golf cart, whoa, excuse me, not Sheila Kuehl, that isn't old. That isn't old.
Yeah, boy, that, yeah.
I'm taking it back a little bit, sorry. Janice Hahn will be on the golf cart and be meeting up there as well. And I think that is it, unless you've got other questions for me. We're looking for a full, fun day.
Oh, and Casino Dock.
Casino Dock, we'll be barbecuing. Virgins is out there today. They were out there till probably about 3:00, possibly 4:00 today, and then from 11:00 till fireworks are over tomorrow as well.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. It's like, everything looks great.
I like all the little flags around, the flowers downstairs.
The big ones.
And the big ones, yeah. Town looks really nice. Who does Public Works? Yeah. Isn't it working on that?
Okay, well, let's go to councilmember reports. You would like to begin.
Okay, I'll start. As we've talked about before, there are ongoing conversations with Southern California Edison about their proposed water rate increase. We had a meeting with, just among the other groups and individuals that have expressed an interest in it, sort of a planning meeting. One of the things we talked about that I'm excited about is setting up a website so that the public could access documents, follow along with what's happening, and we talked about other kinds of shared interest and strategies, so there'll be more coming out of that, I assume, because it's on the agenda, but that's pretty much of an update. And then I did want to just call out the Friends of the Avalon Library for the chess set, the Nega chess set. If you haven't seen it, it's already popular with the kids here, as well as our visitors. They see them taking pictures, and that was Allison Jajinski's idea, and Judy went and found the space, so congratulations to them on a very nice project.
Except, I was watching a couple of kids, I said, "You know how to play this game?" They didn't have a clue. So we might need a little chess club or something, or maybe get some checkers to start.
Micah Phillips has a chess club, so...
Oh, okay.
Maybe he'll expand.
Okay, great.
For kids.
I attended the same meeting with Ms. Albers. Very informative. One good thing that's come of it is the listening questions directed to Edison for information that we wanted to see before we go further down the road, which is some differences of opinion, I think. So we are going to submit the questions to them, also going to submit to the PFC, to show them, to the PFC that we are actively engaged with Edison, you know, with this. Also, I attended the three of California cities mayor's conference, mayor's and councilors conference, and I have been placed in your boxes, or two handouts from, one from the CEO of hers, nearly rear-diminished person, talk about strategy and turn it around so that we don't totally call them handouts, but just partially, and the other about council members and department heads. So, I'm going to keep that.
Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to say kudos to all the city crew, the department heads. Town looks great, getting ready for a nice big weekend. We have two cruise ships coming in tomorrow?
Just one.
Oh, just one?
Thank God.
I was thinking it was going to be two. But just kudos to everybody in the city, and other men working real hard, and everything looks really good right now, so thanks a lot for all the workers and department heads. Thank you.
I was also going to call out the chess set. I walk back there at least seven or eight times a day, and I always see people playing. It's been a very rare occasion where I haven't seen somebody playing, so it's really, really a nice addition. Equally, town looks great. Shout out to Recreation and Community Services for continuing on with the two days' worth of events, which is really neat. It feels festive beforehand, it kind of stretches it out, so it's really nice. Thanks for all the work that you guys have done. And then I also attended a, one of the water meetings, which we'll probably talk a little bit more about, but Pam also gave a little update, so that's all of that.
Okay. I attended the LA County Mayor's meeting on Friday in Santa Monica, which I have never seen those beaches, and those are pretty incredible beaches. But one of the things that I, that took away just from the beach was that they have these suntan lotion machines. So anyway, it might be something I, to maybe discuss that budget time, because I thought those were pretty handy to have for people, but the, they introduced the new chief of the City of Los Angeles, Michael Moore, the new chief of police, was there, as well as Police Chief Eve Irvine from the City of Torrance, and another female, Cynthia Renaud from the City of Santa Monica. So they talked a lot about, and I'm, I don't know if you know about it, the Six Pillars of Public Safety. I guess President Obama had started that a while back, and they all seem to be using those Six Pillars. So anyway, I thought we'd be, if you don't know about that, maybe to look into that. But anyway, and it's, so that was one of the things. And they talked about affordable housing, and, but they talked about something that was going to, no. They talked about affordable housing, and Santa Monica, I mean, these people need to build three and four and five and 10,000 units. That's pretty crazy, but, but they're doing a lot of zoning changes to accommodate, like the parking, because the old parking rules really are antiquated and that kind of thing. So there's some good information there. Then they talked about Safe Clean Water Program, that they're going to, they're, I guess, for the ballot, there's going to be a parcel tax of 2.5 cents per square foot of impermeable area to generate just over $300 million per year, but it's based on the areas within the LA County Flood Control District, so that will not include us, correct, Ole? Because we're not in the LA County...
I don't think we are.
Yeah, so, so that is something that we would be excluded from. If it passes, it wouldn't affect the property owners in Avalon, so I thought that was kind of interesting. Then I was wondering, as we continue to go around, down the road to talk about housing locally, I wasn't doing anything last night, I was wondering about doing an employee housing survey on our employees, so if something comes up, we might be a little more ready. And I don't know if that's something that, I mean, I even kind of made one up as kind of a rough draft, but I don't know if you all see that as valuable, so we could maybe get some data on our own employees.
Mayor, actually, Planning Director Amanda Cook sent us an email about that a few months ago, I think it was, saying, she had some ideas about it, and saying, we might want to reach out to city staff and ask a bunch of questions, so that, I'm completely in favor of that.
Okay. I'd be happy to give you my rough draft, okay? Thank you. And that's all I have for today. Thank you, and let's move along. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. Oh, yeah. I'll just give them to Jordan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. As has been promised to all who officially signed up as sponsors of this year's Fourth of July and parade events, we made a promise that we would present to you their names and their levels of sponsorship, so if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I'm going to read that off. I'm happy to say, in total, transiting our books from the launch of the fundraising campaign this year, we have processed $21,195 in donations, or $16,000 and change last year, so we're quite a bit above, and there's other funds that have gone directly through the city, so Dan and I will get together shortly and figure out what our net amount is. As an Eagle level sponsor this year, we had two, the Catalina Island Inn and the Avalon Hotel. As a Bison level sponsor this year, we have Southern California Edison, Catalina Express, Lloyds of Avalon, and Catalina Business Enterprises. As a Fox level sponsor this year, we have Brown's Bikes, Coyote Joe's, Avalon Freight Services, Aficionados, Island Water Charters, and I believe that's all of the Fox level sponsors, so if you would make sure to patronize those businesses and thank them, and extend your, any social media tags or what have you on them, acknowledging that we'd appreciate it, too. And I passed out at the beginning of the meeting the most up-to-date version of the flyer of events, because it's been a dynamic-changing logo insertion series of events right up to the moment. So as of now, we will only be updating the website. For anything else that comes our way, we won't be reproducing any more printed materials, and that's catalinachamber.com/fireworks.
Right.
Thank you.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I just want to say, it seems like the kids are having a great time on the float at South Beach, but I'm curious, and I've asked this before, why the kayaks are stored on the beach at South Beach? That is such an impacted beach, and I remember they used to be out by the Casino Dock somewhere, so I was just curious, maybe Rec or Harbor know why we're using prime beach space for those kayaks, or if that's the only place. And thank you, happy Fourth.
I don't know if I...
That was the case when they pulled the docks out, when they remodeled the Casino Dock. They took those floats out, that's what I meant to say, they took the floats out, and so there wasn't a space, and when we got into the winter, there wasn't a space for the kayaks. And then we, the city had built the kayak rafts for a place. I think the intention was eventually they would go back to going to the Casino Dock, which hasn't happened yet, but as for why there's still, I mean, if there's another location, maybe we could look at that.
Well, even that, that circle over where Shanda Cassidy's booth is behind the Palapa, that's kind of a nothing space, right at the corner, would be preferable, I think, to taking up the beach space.
So somebody's throwing this out there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Okay, we will go to the consent calendar.
We only have one item on the consent calendar today, and that is actions from the June 5th and the June 19th City Council meetings.
I'm moving. I'll say...
Who's, who do we get?
Ole's got it.
Okay, Ole's got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, call for, any discussion? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Item number two.
Item two is a formation of a council ad hoc committee for the hospital, a measure, possibly a measure for the hospital and the clinic, and at the last city council meeting, it was brought up about the measure that it did not pass at the April thing, and bringing the CEO here, and Jason Paray is in the audience for, to ask some questions out of that, and I'll let you carry it from here.
Did you want to make any, I'm sure you read the staff, did you, what?
Yes, he did.
Yes.
He was sent in.
Did you want to make a comment?
Actually, Annie, it's difficult to hear you.
Oh, is it?
Your mic isn't on.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow, there you are. I'd like to thank you all for inviting me here, and wish you a happy and safe Fourth of July coming on. If you want to, you know, recently, I was on vacation in Mexico, and I looked online at the newspaper, and it reported that I was on vacation in New Mexico, which I thought was really neat, that my vacation is that important, but I also saw in there that you, there were some questions in regards to my CEO report. If anybody has questions, you can always ask me those questions here, or call me up anytime you like, I'm always available. But I do appreciate the interest in this, and we've had in the past a very collaborative relationship with the city, the medical center, and it's nice to see that continuing.
Great, thank you. Any questions of Jason at this moment? Okay. Well, then, who would like to open up the discussion?
Well, I, I had originally raised this. It seems to me that the boat ticket was a good idea, in terms of having gone through the available funding mechanisms, and the longer we wait to put something on the ballot, the less money is going to be collected, and it seemed to me that one of the, among the many stumbling blocks or reasons that were noted in your report that may have led to the measure not passing was land, but of course, if you accumulated money over time, it may be possible to even, to buy land, or the city could use its ability to divide land, so that, I don't think that should be a stumbling block, and really, when it comes to money, and all you young people out there start saving, time is what you need in order to, to gather enough money to do a project like this. So, I think it was the consensus of the council that since we can put something on the ballot, and, and that's why originally, I think, six months is not what we need. What we need is something that ends in October with something being put on the November ballot, was sort of what I envisioned as a goal, because otherwise, we're gonna have to hold a special election, and there are costs related to that, as opposed to doing something with a consolidation with the county in November. But to have the city council work with whomever they thought was appropriate, obviously, you and the hospital board, but members of the community who felt very strongly about this, who had ideas about it, to put together a report and recommendations, bring it back to the city council, and we could then determine if we ourselves want to put something on the ballot. Of course, it's still gonna require the 66% approval, but I think it's definitely, that's something that the community needs, and I appreciate the work that's been done, and feel like we can build off that to, to get something going.
I agree with you about the money and land issue, fully, you know, but one of my largest concerns, or probably the biggest concern, is time. The amount of time it takes to design and build a facility is probably around 10 years, and we are short on time in order to meet the seismic standards, and also, you throw on top of that, we have an aging, archaic facility already that is very costly to keep up and running. It's a dinosaur, and so, thank you for your help.
And I, and I just do want to remind people that we used to have a transient occupancy tax that was 9%. Members of the, you know, business community, the chamber, city council, the city manager, there was a full court press, and that was a 66% vote, and the community approved that. So I don't think that having not succeeded on the first go-round dictates a similar result on the second go-round.
I, I agree with you. We can definitely, there are many issues that we can improve upon. We learned a lot from it. We are in the process of developing a survey, you know, for the community on the, on the needs of, of what they want in a facility, and also, you know, what we could improve upon with about the last ballot measure, in order to perfect this a little bit better. We have heard a lot of, you know, voices back from the community, you know, when I was speaking to the community, and when the, and my board members have been speaking to members of the community, the number one question is always land, and so that is a concern of many people.
And so I just was a little concerned, because you had listed certain items, that's, I don't know if that was a finite list, but it definitely did leave off the size of the facility, which was an issue to me, and I know to other people too. So I hope that you haven't closed your minds to the idea that there were other major issues that you had.
No, not at all. Not one bit. One of the, you know, if this committee is, is developed with two council members, I have been talking to, there's a new hospital that's opening up recently, it's going to open up in Tehachapi.
I saw you.
It is a 70,000 square foot facility, it's costing around $110 million. I've been talking to the CEO, and he is going to be issuing me some dates in the coming month, in which we can actually go up there and visit, and have a tour of the facility, and garner some more information, it might be a good educational path for people that do not necessarily, haven't lived in the healthcare industry.
Right, good.
I really appreciate the items on the agenda tonight, because I, I, this, this council's so engaged and excited about things happening in our community. I love the idea of being able to participate as a community leader in, you know, whatever capacity falls in, in my particular lap, whether it be any of the three items, for example, we have tonight, but I do feel very partial to this one. I've been involved in groups over the last couple of years with the hospital, and I, I like the idea of having support from the city, and having the city be involved to whatever capacity it could be at that level. So I'll just start it out, and say that I would be more than happy to serve with another member of our council, and participating, meeting, and sharing information, so.
I, I was, I was gonna make a motion, just beca, and I'll explain why I do see, Cindy, that you've been very active in participating and following what's going on with the hospital, and of course, Ollie has years of experience having served on the board and so forth, and I would nominate Councilman Cassidy and Councilman Olson to form that committee.
Is that something you're interested in, Cindy? Okay. All right, so there's a motion, was it?
Public comment?
Can we discuss, Ollie?
Public, public comment. Okay, then, there was a motion by Councilmember Albers, was there a second? Was that you, Richard? Okay, call for the vote.
All ayes.
And just back to that, the four months even, the four months that ad hoc study with us, they're doing their survey, and I don't know what that timeline would be, how long does it take to actually put something on the ballot from a city clerk's perspective? I mean, I don't, I, because this is July, August, September.
Right, no, this is a gotta-move-fast kind of thing.
Yeah, so, I mean, how, how much time does it take from, say, to, to actually get the, well, and also the city attorney?
The deadline of the last one was in the middle of December, for four months down the road, right?
Yeah, so we're looking at a month, a month and a half.
Yeah.
And I, I can, I can come back at the next meeting with a particular timeline, if it's a council-directed matter.
That would be different timeline.
Then we would have a week, two weeks.
Well, right.
Yeah, all right, so maybe it should be more than six months.
Yeah. Maybe just don't put a time limit on it, but, but I think the ad hoc committee should be there, and, and that's what the ad hoc committee could work on, when would be the most appropriate time.
Or they can certainly come back and make a recommendation of the time they extended. So six months does, yeah.
Okay. All right, so moved a second, and we call for the vote?
No, we did.
We did. Oh, you did that one already, okay, why you're not? We can't get out of here too early. Okay. And thank you all for coming for them from the hospital. Okay, item number...
Number three. In general business is a formation of a council ad hoc committee for a period of one year, up to one year, to participate in discussions and meetings regarding proposals from Southern California Edison to increase the water rates and related tariff and advice letter matters.
Who wants to comment?
I think it's a good idea.
I would suggest that we just say that it's to the conclusion of the rate case, because I think one year is optimistic estimate as to how long this might take to resolve.
Okay.
And, and I will just indicate my interest in, in serving as one of the committee members on this.
I would like to nominate, well, Pam and Ollie, he's been around with those, all the stakeholders for a long time.
That's okay.
Oh, well, that's okay too, but, well, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, well, so I made a motion for those two, and then, can either go or lie for, die for lack of a second?
One second.
Okay, for those two?
For those two.
Okay.
I will certainly go along with that, I just want to say that one of my frustrations, which is why I forced myself into the room several weeks ago, is the updates. So I will certainly appreciate that, but I, and Pam, you've done a great update at the last meeting, from the first meeting that you went to, but I want to make sure that I, whether it is public information or not public information, as a council member, I would still like to get a full update from the meetings, at whatever confidential level, if that's the case. I know there are some things that are not, that, you know, are ideas floating around that don't necessarily need to be out there until they're actually a go or not a go, but I, I just felt really left out of some of that information in the past, but yet, I'm meeting with Edison on a regular basis, getting other information and other updates, and educating myself, so this might actually save me some time.
And I do want to say that there was a commitment in the room to transparency, recognition that this impacts the public, and the public needs to be informed about what's happening with it. Although, I mean, obviously, there's some, you know, certain extent of strategy or whatever, but really, you know, the facts are the facts, and they should just be shared with people.
Well, and all you have to do is give them to Denise, and Denise distributes appropriately by what's legal or not.
And as I said, no, we already discussed setting up a publicly accessible website to, so people can follow what's happening.
Okay.
Just, just don't comment on, on the, once the website's set up, don't email each other on the website.
Yes.
All right, okay, so there's a motion and a second? Comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Oh, sorry.
And we did the amendment to say to the conclusion.
I asked.
Did we amend to say to the conclusion of the matter?
Yes, we did.
Not just for the one year, okay, great.
Item number four. Okay, I want in.
It's all yours.
I'm in.
Yeah, good.
I will, it's, I guess, the same sort of conversation, only for the appointment of two council members to serve the ad hoc committee, so I will make a motion to appoint Mayor Marshall and Councilwoman Hernandez to facilitate the evaluation and review of medical cannabis delivery business permit application.
Second.
Okay, and before we vote, it says, a selection committee comprised of the city manager and a representative from the Chamber of Commerce will be established. I, and Captain Hawking, I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to call you today, but I was wondering if it wouldn't be a problem if your new officer, Adam Scott, sat on that committee to review the cannabis applications? I mean, you're more than welcome, but I just thought, new guy, he's been on the mainland, and maybe he's got some insider, some outsider things. I don't even know him well, but, but he seems like a nice guy.
Right. One thing that the sheriff's department does not want to do is get involved with the cannabis procedures. The department's considering it a conflict of interest, because if there's any violations, once the city gives a license, we're the ones that would be enforcing it.
Totally understand that, good answer.
Okay, but with that being said, if there is, if the committee has any questions regarding the law or anything like that, what we would do if there was a violation, I have no problem talking to the committee, but just cannot be a member on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, for example, when we start to look at, when, when Rich and I are looking at their security procedures, for example, it might be nice to get your opinion to which are the, which of those systems seems to be appropriate.
Yes, ma'am, and we would love to be part of that.
On that kind of thing.
But just the selection portion and all that, we don't want to be involved in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just so the council knows, as the staff report says, because it's an ad hoc committee consisting of members of the council and members of the public, that the meetings are branded meetings, so you will be not meeting in public, I mean, you'll be meeting in public, not behind closed doors.
Oh, okay, okay, so, so we, how do we, so the city manager will be in with us, and then a representative of the Chamber of Commerce will be established, correct? And, okay, I, and I would like this to happen sooner than later, the people that have, by no fault of theirs or ours, but it's been a while, so if we can not fast-track this, but really, look, look at this seriously, I mean, I, I don't mind saying three months on there, but I would like to see us be a little quicker than that.
Again, and the timeline, as set forth in the staff report, is actually a month and one month and three weeks, so it's actually much quicker, but you never know.
Oh, okay, versus, okay, I know, okay. Perfect. So Denise, you'll work on the, the, getting that other person from the chamber?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, well, good, okay, so we've got to vote on this too. Motion and a second? Any comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
And now, we're going to vote session, yes?
Yeah, we have two close sessions regarding confidence with real property negotiators. There we go. The properties are at 206 East Whitley and 219 Metropole.
Okay.
I said 219, it's the same thing.
Do we get to excuse staff? Do they have to come back?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Hey, I know.
What'd she say?
I like this 3:00 meeting.
Richard?
Yeah.
3:00 meeting?
So nice.
I like the two, I like the three, but two would be better.
Richard, we were working for three.
Do you have one o'clock? Come in, he's fat.
Thank you. Okay.
My brother's coming to town, I'm picking him up at 6:15.
Okay.
I don't want to give you reports.
Yeah, don't contact her.
Okay, good.